Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban, a multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole, and I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued, to protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years, and I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our County Administrator-Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today, and I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners, and they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community, and vice versa. We couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator-Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Good morning. I'd like to call our Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting today to order for Thursday, March 23rd. Clerk, can we get a roll? Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners Womack.
Present.
Voorhees.
Present.
Vaughnck.
Here.
Tallon.
Here.
Steck.
Here.
Skaggs.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Mast.
Here.
Corndyke.
Present.
Coleman.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Bukowski.
Present.
Breavy.
Here.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Here.
Commissioner Antor.
Here.
Chair Saulfeld. Madam Clerk, you have 18 members present, one absent. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would call on Commissioner Hennessy for indication.
This morning, I'm taking from 100 days of prayer from the Dominican Sisters and their daily prayer for national unity and healing. God of wisdom and mercy, grant us patience to listen, compassion to be open to other views and opinions, generosity to forgive, and grace to change. As you taught us to love our neighbor, compel us to be healing instruments of unity and reconciliation. We pray that you give us strength and encourage our nation to move forward in unity. And the prayer for one day of this week was specifically, today we pray that all elected leaders uphold, respect, and unify above blame, criticism, and exclusion. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will be moving to Item 5, Special Order of Business. As most commissioners have noted, we have a very robust agenda today, so we will be doing our Quality Service Employee Award first, and then followed by our three other presentations. I'd like to call on Starius and also Sergeant Deanna Lood to the podium.
Hello, I'm Sergeant Deanna Lood, and I'm part of the Employee Recognition for Quality Service team. So today, we are here to recognize Vicki Plowman from the Kent County Prosecutor's Office Victim Witness Division, who was selected as our Quality Service employee for the first quarter of 2017. The person who nominated Vicki wrote, "Vicki has worked for victim witness for 20-plus years and has assisted a multitude of victims in and through the criminal justice system. Her patience, calm demeanor, and willingness to go above and beyond what is required in the job has been consistent throughout her career." You can often find her working after hours on her cases to make sure she doesn't leave a phone call unanswered, or a person who may come in at 5:00 left without answers to their questions. One of her coworkers said, "Vicki treats everyone as if they were her neighbor or friend, and is endlessly patient. Our office works victims in when they are at times at their worst. Vicki has the insight to meet that person where they most need help. A team player, she's willing to share the spotlight with everyone. Even with this nomination, she will say it's the office and not her. She is a pleasure to work with, and we are so pleased that she's a part of our department. Please join us in congratulating Vicki for her notable contributions to the citizens of Kent County."
We really appreciate all your hard works. Moving on to Item B, I would like to bring Ron Kahler up. Ron is going to discuss the Kent County School District Milage, and my clerk has informed me to remind everyone that this is an informative, informational, gathering presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to each one of you for inviting me here today to hear about the Strong Schools, Strong Communities proposal that'll be on your ballot May 2nd. And I spoke with Commissioner Saulfeld.
Ah, in front of the microphone? Okay, good. Is that better? I spoke with Commissioner Saulfeld a few weeks ago, and he thought it would be helpful if I were to present to this group, if for no other reason than you would understand how it is that we at Kent ISD are able to bring a proposal to the ballot without your input, because typically, an organization that desires to go on the ballot and ask the voters for resources comes through Kent County. And this, of course, is a Kent County issue, but it's much larger than Kent County as well, because we serve large portion of Berry County, portions of Ottawa and Montcalm and Ionia as well in our school districts. So, but, so thanks a lot. I think we all know that West Michigan is thriving, doing well, and our economy's growing rapidly. We're the fastest-growing area in the state in terms of our economy and our, and also, you know, our population growth. And I think we all recognize that for our economy to continue to grow, that strong schools are a key part of that economy, that our schools are the talent pipeline for our growing West Michigan businesses and our ability to attract businesses. We serve at Kent ISD 94, about 94,500 students in 20 individual school districts. Unfortunately, despite the growing economy, our districts and our families aren't all sharing in that rebirth. More than, about 51,000 of our students, more than half are economically disadvantaged. We are a beacon to the world, however. We have more than 10,000 students in our districts, our English-language learners. Some of our districts in Kentwood and Grand Rapids in particular, students speak more than 65, 70 languages, so they come from all over the world. And we have about 12,000 students with disabilities. The reason I bring that up is this. We find that many of these students will need additional services other than one teacher in the classroom, one teacher with 30 students. Many of these students at some time in their educational career, or perhaps throughout, Dave and your population, may need additional help throughout their K-12 career. We've, we're getting better. Our graduation rates are up. Our, as a region, we're growing in terms of important measures, third-grade reading proficiency, eighth-grade math. We've consolidated early childhood, in which our community has made that a key priority, and we are serving more students than ever before in preschool, which prepares them for early literacy and then to be successful in their career. I want to just clear up for you some things that people ask us or think they know. Of the big five things that we deal with, our revenue is decided by pupil count. So we really have no control over our individual revenue at the state level. Most of this, most of our dollars come from the state, with the exception of bond issues that we ask our community to help build bricks and mortar, but all of the dollars, with the exception of the proposal I'm going to speak with you today, to staff those buildings comes from Lansing. We have no control over the pupil counts. We have no control over the revenue that the state provides us. We have no control over our retirement system. Retirement system is a state retirement system, developed by the state, managed by the state. They send us a bill. Until 1994, when the people passed Proposal A, we did not even pay, as a school district, any of those dollars. It came from the state. We also now, like you, are, have limits on what we can do in healthcare. We chose, most of our districts chose the hard cap. I believe only one of them is on 80/20. I don't know what you do here, but we no longer bargain that either, with the exception of getting a bill to let us know what the increase is in that hard cap each year. So really, you know, it's been ratcheted down since we've been under state control to wages are the big thing that we bargain. I want to tell you a little bit about what's happened with our funding. Probably you recognize this in revenue sharing as well, in the municipalities you serve. But if you look at state funding, our high watermark in terms of actual inflation-adjusted dollars really was in 2000. In 2010, 2011, as we were coming out of the recession, we took a relatively large hit. The governor decided that he needed to rebase the school foundation grant. He also needed, made a number of changes that he felt was going to grow the economy. And so at that time, we dropped relatively significantly. It's fair to note that in 2008, 2009, we were receiving $7,316 per pupil. It took us until last year to finally get over that in real dollars. But what's happened is, our schools' funding has failed to keep pace with inflation. And so there have been study after study, if you've paid attention, like I do, to education studies indicating that we are receiving fewer dollars than the rate of inflation. About $1,233 per pupil less than we would have received if funding had simply kept pace with inflation. And Michigan State University brought out a study that said, you know what, schools are falling into financial disrepair through no fault of their own. Across the country, just to give you a little bit of context about funding, our base funding is $7,511 per pupil, and 15 of the 20 districts in Kent County receive the lowest amount allowed by law, $7,511 per pupil. Across the country, the states who are performing the best, Massachusetts, New York, New Jersey, the Minnesota, the states that you hear, why aren't, why isn't Michigan performing at that rate? They spend much more per pupil. We spend, in many instances, less than half of what the highest-performing states in the country are spending. We feel that we've done a good job. Our individual school districts, Betsy Milton was on the Kentwood Public School Board, and she knows that they would drill in deeply into their own school budget, but we at Kent, like you do here at Kent County, we look at the operations as a whole. We look at all of the school funding, and we compare it by elementary, middle, and high. We give comparisons to our districts, so they're able to analyze their spending relative to their neighbors, so that they can understand, how are you able to put more dollars in a classroom in the middle school than I am? What are you doing that's different than I do? And what we found is, we've done a pretty good job. Over the last eight years, we've held our expenditures to less than 1% increase a year, six tenths of 1%. While we're doing that, we've increased, if you look at this number, we've increased the amount that we are spending in the classroom, even as our state revenues have fallen well below the rate of inflation, which is about 1.92%. And so we feel like we're doing a good job. But to maintain our investment in the classroom, we're spending down our fund balance at a precipitous rate, because our state funding hasn't kept up with the need and the increased expenses that we have. Our superintendents have set for all of us the goals of making sure that students are ready for kindergarten through our expenditures into early childhood, third-grade reading proficiency, which is so important, because if students don't learn to read by third grade, they can't read to learn afterwards. Eighth-grade math proficiency is essential to the STEM careers that are so prevalent in our community, and we want all of our kids to be career and college-ready. I can talk a little bit about the needs, but I just want to focus on one thing. I want to thank you for helping with the development and the ongoing financing of the Kent School Services Network. When you look at the 51,000 students who are economically disadvantaged, when you look at the students who are English-language learners, the Kent School Services Network that together we work to bring services and deploy human services into the school buildings directly to serve the needs of children, we have done dramatic work in terms of controlling or lowering the amount of absenteeism, reducing disciplinary incidents, and increasing student proficiency. And we've grown from a handful of buildings 11 years ago, to now we're in 38 buildings across the county. But the route, the span of buildings that we would like to be able to serve is about 90, so we're not reaching all of the buildings where there are needs. Many of our districts need additional dollars to meet their match, to extend that programming to the other buildings within their district, or districts that don't receive those services. So, the requests that we have before you. State law that was passed in 1994, along with Proposal A, the reason, it allowed school districts one way to get additional revenue beyond that which was provided by the state, and that was through what they call a regional enhancement village. I think if you were to speak with any of your superintendents in the districts that you serve, they would tell you this is a survival village. But the law says this is an enhancement village, and what, the mechanism for that, and part of why I'm here today to explain, is that that law says that when the school districts representing 51% or more of the students within an ISD petition that ISD to hold an election, that ISD shall hold an election at the next general election date or the next special election date, whichever that is. All 20 of our districts in December petitioned Kent ISD to hold an enhancement village. We are asking for nine tenths of a mill for a 10-year period. By law, we could ask for three mills for up to 20 years. This will bring us about $211 per pupil. It will be far less than the $12,000, $13,000 per pupil that spent many of the Oakland County schools, but this will give us what would amount to about a two-year increase in dollars as we've been receiving them from the state. It'll give us dollars to help provide essential services to prepare kids for careers, and to provide those services to stabilize families in poverty by Kent School Services Network. The way this works is, Kent ISD levies the village, Kent ISD collects the village, Kent ISD distributes 100% of those dollars back to the individual school districts on a per-pupil basis. 100%, no processing fee, no, you know, none of that. 100% goes back to benefit our local districts. And it'll be fully audited and reported back to our community how we're using these dollars. As funding has failed to keep pace with inflation, others across the state have decided to invest more. Five ISDs have now decided and been able to pass these millages to better prepare their children and to provide the education they need and their families expect. As you can see, ours, if successful, would be the lowest of any of those. What it would cost the average homeowner is about $67.50 a year. Owner of a $150,000 home, maybe, you know, marginally higher. I think the average price of a home right now is about $180,000 across Kent County, and so that would be closer to $85 a year. But we believe that, you know, this is a relatively small price to pay to ensure that we have a talent pipeline to continue to grow the economic future of our community. So I'd ask you if you have any additional questions of me, and that you would share with your friends and neighbors when they ask you, what is this? Because this is a new tax that nobody in our community has voted on in the past, and so there's a certain amount of confusion about it. And I appreciate your time to help inform you, so that you're better understand and can share with your friends and neighbors and constituents, because of course, you're opinion leaders, and your opinion's valued in this community.
Thank you, Ron. I'll open it up for Commissioner questions. Do you have any questions for Ron?
Yes, Captain.
Commissioner Antor?
Oh, thank you, Chair. Good morning. Here in West Michigan, there's a lot of village fatigue right now. Seems like every time you turn around, there's another village coming forward. Money's always considered to be urgent or necessary, or, you know, things are going to implode. You mentioned something about the diverse population that's coming into West Michigan and the needs to accommodate. Is it a language thing?
English-language learners, yes. You know, the step, one of the studies that I referenced, the State Education Finance Study, which was approved by the legislature when County Clerk Lyons was a state representative, that study released in June said that we are underfunded by about $1,156 per pupil across the state, but more importantly, that study said that students to be adequately educated, students who are English-language learners need 40% more than that. That would put that number up over 10,000. Students who are at risk need 30% more than what they're receiving now. So that would put their funding up over 9,000. None of our school districts receive for any student those amounts of dollars. We, 15 of our 20 districts are at the lowest amount allowed by law in terms of funding. Oakland ISD schools, most of them receive about $10,000 per pupil. Many of them spend 12 to 13. So we have a disadvantage in terms of our ability to meet the needs of many of our students.
I understand that, and we have electives for students that are, you know, English-speaking to speak other languages. That's usually by choice. What we're really looking to do here is take money away from students who speak English, divert it over to people who don't, and it just seems like there's some sort of personal responsibility missing, you know, travel or come over to a country to have some sort of basic, you know. It seems unfair almost to the students that are here to take away their resources, because we don't have the money, you know. We are the United States of America, not the United States of the world. And if we continue to try to be the healer for everybody, we're all going to end up falling short. So that part of it, I have a little bit of a problem with, because I think we're falling short across the board, and there's things that could be rectified. Some of these things are self-created hardships, not for the kids, but it's not, we can't educate the world, you know. We got to take care of our kids first. So that would be my only thought on that, respectfully. Thank you.
I understand it, but they do end up in our buildings.
I understand that, too.
Many of them are not literate in their home language, let alone ours, so.
Commissioner Melton, do you have a question?
My, my only question is, Ron, seeing the numbers that you gave, that the other counties have asked for enhancement, and you touched on a subject that has always been a very difficult one for me, and that is, if my children lived in Wayne County, they would be receiving from the state to go to school, to learn the same subjects, up to $5,000 more every year, to learn the exact same things that they are learning in Kentwood. Not, in my opinion, a fair break of money. But having said that, are you on the lower end because you are concerned that anything higher will not even be considered in Kent County? Or, I mean, why not shoot for more? I know I'm opposite of what Mr. Ant, Commissioner Antis is saying, but it's not going to be just the English-language learners who will benefit from this money. It will be children such as mine. They will also benefit from the monies.
Yeah, it will be all students who benefit, and, you know, the, to answer your question directly, our superintendents have studied this for about seven or eight years, five years ago, when we received a $470 per pupil cut from Lansing, and then they began to pay down the unfunded liability on our pension, which is absolutely the right thing to do. We lost about $1,700 per pupil in the classroom as a result of those changes. So it dramatically impacted our ability to serve kids, and our superintendents really feel as though they're not going to be able to serve the youngest children as they serve their older siblings. But we also are very respectful of our community and the tax fatigue that Commissioner Antor referenced, and we want to be prudent and good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And so we worked really hard to consolidate services. We consolidated all of our special ed and transportation, and we've saved about $30 million over the years in that. We've consolidated a lot of our administrative back-office services. All of the IT, the major IT services come through Kent ISD. We do, you know, HR and, you know, a lot of business services, so a lot of people have been, you know, when you see more money invested in the classroom, that means fewer people in central office. We've done what we can. We're asking for We're asking for nine-tenths of a mill now, because we fear that the next cuts will absolutely come at the expense of children.
Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. My understanding was that the grand bargain back with Proposal A was that principal funding for the schools would go through the state. And, so that if we needed more funding, the first conversation would be to Lansing. And, so I guess I'm asking a little bit, what's the status of that conversation? How intense is that? And then suggesting that from the taxpayers' perspective, it looks a little bit like a shell game now, with the state talking about reducing taxes and sending some back, if they're supposed to be the primary funder, and then here at the local level, that means we end up having to ask for more money on millages. So, what's the status of that conversation?
Well, I can say that as far back as my intense conversations with Senator Sikema, he would tell me that, Ron, we have given you a tool to increase funding, and you have failed to use it. But, I would also say this, the, the drafters of Proposal A feared that it would not fully fund schools, which is why they included this provision. And indeed, in the first six years of Proposal A, the legislature contributed from the state general fund as much as six hundred million dollars into the school aid fund, as much as six hundred million dollars a year from the general fund into the school aid fund. That stopped after two thousand, and after two thousand, they only contributed what was statutorily required. In two thousand and eight, my good friend Bob Emerson, who was at the time the state budget director, found a loophole in the law, and for the first time, we began spending for higher education out of the school aid fund. Today, seven hundred and eighty-two million dollars that used to be spent out of the general fund is now spent out of the school aid fund to finance community colleges and higher education. There's another one point two billion dollars in the general fund that goes to higher education that could potentially come out of the school aid fund if they were to pass a reduction or rollback in the income tax, as was discussed in the very first week of activity in the legislature.
Commissioner Womack?
Yes. Recently, Governor Snyder, and I have a few questions. Governor Snyder has allocated a few more funds to the schools. That was recently in the newspaper. How does any of that benefit KISD?
None of that benefits KISD, but it does the twenty school districts and the ninety-five thousand students we serve in the traditional public schools, as well as the twenty-four charter schools. But, here's, here's the, the answer to you more specifically. He proposed an increase of one hundred dollars per pupil. Districts, and that would be in all of those districts that have seventy-five eleven, so fifteen of our districts would receive a hundred dollars per pupil. The, the cost, the increased cost of pension and the increased cost of healthcare will cost us about seventy dollars per pupil. So, that six-tenths of one percent increase that was proposed is now thirty dollars per pupil for the districts that are at the very lowest funding rate. For those districts that are a higher funding rate, like Forest Hills Public Schools, we have invested in equity, as former House member Lisa Lyons will tell us. And so, in investing in equity, what we do is, we give the lowest-funded districts twice as much as we give the highest-funded districts. And so, in Forest Hills, and East Grand Rapids, and in Caledonia, instead of having one hundred dollars per pupil increase, they will get a fifty dollar per pupil increase, but they'll get a bill for seventy dollars increase in terms of pension and healthcare. And so, they'll have a twenty dollar per pupil cut. So, really, it's not an increase at all, although it sounds as though it is. Now, one good thing the governor did, very good thing, was to recommend an increase in the at-risk funding, and for the students who are at risk. That would be a great benefit, to fully fund that formula, because the legislature did recognize some years ago that the flat rate per pupil really isn't adequate to meet the needs of all students.
Thank you. And I didn't assume that a hundred dollars was really, per student, was adequate, when we're giving the lowest to them, to a lot of these school systems, that are some of the larger school systems in Michigan. When we talk about our English learners, I just, I, I just like to say, when we have our English learners that are here in this country, once they become citizens, they are U.S. citizens. And we're going to either pay in the front end or the back end when it comes to our English learners and our at-risk students, because we can pay now to educate them, or we'll be paying on the other end when we have uneducated people who end up on assistance, or end up in the prisons. So, I'm very supportive of helping our young children, especially our children, on the front end of making sure that they're educated, because education is one of the things that separates us and makes us one of the greatest countries in, in the history of the world. So, I just wanted to put that out, that I believe our English learners, once they are citizens, they deserve the same rights as the rest of the students here. I wanted you to explain a little more on the additional resources and supports that would be in the classroom, though, that all the students would benefit from. How that would break down? What are the things you could physically see changing in those classrooms that would better their chances of having a greater education here?
We'd like to make sure that at a minimum, we can keep our class sizes the way they are. We'd like to lower the class sizes. When I say if students need additional help, what I mean is, typically, we will pull some students out, provide them additional assistance in reading, or in phonetics, or in speech. And some students, if they don't have that in their individual education plan, we are no longer able to do that, because we don't have the staffing to support it. And so, and also, there are many programs that we are now developing that will do two things. One, have direct exposure to the world of work, so students understand the jobs that are out there, and they can aspire to those jobs. The other is early college, so that students have the opportunity to experience the rigor of college while they're still in high school, and earn college credit. That gives them great confidence that they can succeed when they go to college, and it also lowers the debt burden on families to send their children to college. And so, I think you will directly see more of those types of programs happening if this passes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, thank you, Ron. And I just have a final question. Did we cap, we did cap the pensions, did we not? Did the state cap the pensions?
The pension that I enjoy...
Covering the increase?
Yeah.
So, they did help try to cost-control that pension cost?
Right. The pension that is available, that was a part of the agreement when I started in the public schools is closed. Nobody else receives that type of pension. Any new employee has both a hybrid, which is part defined benefit, part defined contribution, and they're paying about eight and a half percent of their salary to those two pieces. That part is fully funded. It's the unfunded liability on the old pension that will go away in about eighteen years.
Okay. Well, thank you so much today for your presentation. I really appreciate it. I think we all learned a lot, and appreciate your time.
Well, we appreciate your, your time very much. Thank you.
All right.